On staff recognition on the second item.
Motion.
Substitute motion.
Hold up, he didn't get it second here.
Oh.
I'll second, you say?
Okay, you got second.
No, I'm.
There's substitute motion. Give them ten days suspension. Uh, can you have a little bit of alcohol class or?
What's that?
Is second?
Yeah, we got substitute motion. That'd be for ten days suspension and a tenth of alcohol, uh, drug class and more probably that case due to violence with acts of omission. Uh, we have a motion, let's hold on that substitute motion. Uh, go with the little thing.
Can we clear?
Yes.
Okay. Clearing.
Okay, motion there. Go back to the. By the ready motion by Mr. Eber and Mr. Dorian. Uh, both.
Let's clear the sheet all up.
Okay. Okay, motion passed. And names? Two. Okay, we'll go to the next item, which, uh.
Which is a staff recommendation on the consultant.
Staff recommendation on consultant, that's for the DSA case. What's that? About this, what's he say about this Dorian? Dorian. All the things. Any names? Motion carried. Uh. We not going to turn the music, Mr. Heffernan will be in about five to ten minutes. Take a break right now, but another seven minutes or just take a break.
At a jury meeting in the Boyle Parish in Martinsville, it was supposed to be tomorrow, we moved it up one day, so it's happened to be two places almost in the same time, but I appreciate your consideration on this. Uh, what I wanted to do to start our discussions with regards to your redistricting plan, these are the election districts, not your school districts. After each census is taken, you have to make a determination whether your districts are still in balance or not population wise, using the census population. If you haven't come up, if it has not been put on the agenda yet, pretty soon you're wanting to have one on there, which is a resolution. Showing with the 2020 census council order, bringing to your current elective district. This is the first thing you usually have to do toward this state statute. If any districts are outside plus or minus five percent, then you have to go through the redistricting process, which is basically adjusting your boundaries to either add more people in or take people out of your district. The chart that you see up there are your findings that we have. This kind of going across. Well, first of all, your average district size is the 2020 population of the parish divided by ten. That, if everybody had the exact same number of, of people in their district, you would have five out of one hundred seventy-seven. Do you go five percent above or five percent below that number? So just taking a look at like the first line that chart reads like District One, it has a 2020 population of five thousand three hundred sixteen, which is a hundred thirty-nine people above that fifty-one seventy-seven number. Express as a percentage is three percent, so within the plus minus five percent. Then have it break out by, uh, all white and black. Let's take a look at District Three. District Three had four thousand six hundred sixty-nine, uh, people in the district with the 2020 counts. That's five hundred eight below that ideal value of fifty-one seventy-seven. That represents a minus ten percent deviation, but that's outside the plus and minus five percent. If any one more district is outside of that plus minus five percent, you have to redistrict. So as you look at it, you have some out of within it, you have some like, uh, five is a minus eleven, six is a plus eleven, seven is a minus two, and so on and so forth. So you have some of them that are going to actually be adjusted, but unfortunately, as you move one line, you're affecting a neighboring district, and that's why I like doing this as a group. This resolution, when it comes up on your, uh, agenda, is just a statement saying that we follow the requirements of, uh, revised statute thirty-three, thirty-fourteen eleven, which we have to, within six months of the release of the census, we have to do that calculation to determine whether redistricting was necessary. I did those calculations, that's in the resolution, so that's all this is, is just a house key, uh, matter. You got six months to do it, so there's no real bit rush. In order to do the lines, these are your current lines as they are right now, we need to adjust some of these, these boundaries. Now, the criteria that we use, and some of y'all have been through this process before. Section two of Voting Rights Act really, uh, provides the most requirements and guidance that we have on redistricting. Uh, your districts need to be compact, where you can avoid a kind of stream of miles unnecessarily. They gotta be contiguous, the only section we have here, because of Lord St. Martin's not contiguous, is the rest of the parish. Uh, if you want to kind of keep your communities together to the extent that you can, uh, it's not always possible, but where it is, you want to try to keep them together so they have a stronger voice in, uh, the affairs of the school system. Uh, you want to try to keep your districts as close to where they were as you can, that's preservation of court district. You don't want to just completely revise everything. Basically, you want to start with what you got, make the adjustments that you need to get your numbers balanced out. Protection of incumbents, uh, I get a lot of questions about that. Uh, that is not the idea of any going on board and unvery managed over any potential challenges. What that was put in to the Voting Rights Act later is because around the country, uh, after this was passed in sixty-five, uh, they did some redistricting administration with all the majority districts. Well, there is force needs after that. Some areas around the country were using reapportionment to re, to draw out or take minority representatives out of their district, which we didn't, that, uh, that representation. So that was put in there to keep a misuse of reapportionment in that regard, so that's making use of there. That's there. Probably the biggest change in that since we did this in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, is that at this point in time, we do not have to submit the plan to section two, the Department of Justice under a section five review. That was a section five pre-clearance, if you recall, that was the terminology we used. When the plan was adopted last time, we had to send it to Washington and prove to them that we comply with section two of the Voting Rights Act. If they agreed, they sent back a letter saying we reviewed the plan, we're pre-clearing it to deal with that. At this point, since that twenty thirteen Shelby County versus Holder case, um, Supreme Court found a formal that determined which ones had to send that to section five review was out of date and was unconstitutional. So as of right now, we do not have to do it. Now, when the court came out with that, a lot of people were running around like, oh my God, they're just gonna do whatever they want willy-dilly, there's no, there's no guidelines or anything to keep somebody from doing what they want. That is not correct. Just because we don't have, have an oversight with the section five, we still have to follow section two of the Voting Rights Act. Uh, and that's what we'll be doing, as we have done every reapportionment before. Those items that we listed there, plus one below there, one man, one vote, those are all general traditional redistricting principles that we will be following as we do this. There are two bills at, in Congress right now, that if either one of those, uh, Voting Rights Bill passed, will probably reinstate section five, uh, for some jurisdictions. Most likely, if they do that, Louisiana would probably want us to do that. As of right now, we don't have to do it. The biggest thing it does for us is it reduces the paperwork, and also we don't have to carve a hundred twenty-day period for their review out of our timeline. Right now, we're electing to come up to the fall of twenty twenty-two. If we don't have section five clearance reinstate, you have to adopt the plan by June of twenty twenty-two. If we have section five pre-clearance reinstated by the passage of one of those bills, your deadline will be up to January of twenty twenty-two. We gotta do it in sixty days, plus an additional sixty days for review. So the biggest thing is the timeline that it affects, because our plan is gonna be the same, whether we have to do section five pre-clearance or not, if we comply with state and federal criteria. Speaking of state criteria, the main thing that we have to deal with on that is the use of your precincts. Both you and the council use precincts to build your districts. Now, whole precincts don't always fit nice and neat into a, a district. Sometimes you might have one or two precincts, and you try to add a third one in, give them a population, and that's too many, so you end up having to divide a precinct. So we call precincts split. The school boards are allowed to split up the three precincts per district, but no precinct can be split between more than two school board districts. That's a state guideline that we have to be aware of. Now, I am working with the parish council on their plan. Their plan is likely going to create or split some precincts. Now, when they split a precinct, they have to create a whole precinct out of it, which means that we can then use that for our plan here for the school board. If we need to, then it won't count against a split, because it'll be a whole precinct, not a split precinct. So in that regard, that may give us a little more flexibility on the design of the school board's plan, uh, to use, uh, plans to move forward. Uh, the other thing is the, uh, the, about race, and its effect on the plan. Preserving the minority voting strength is extremely important. It's one of the top things that we're required to do, to try to preserve that to the extent that we can. But not so much that you compromise those other redistricting principles. In words, you can't just take a minority community and put it in a district and run down the right way of a highway, pick up another little community in that party, pick up another little community, and just basically gerrymander to get the numbers that you need. It's still need to be compact, contiguous, preservation communities of interest, those type of things. Where you don't want to do it deliberately, draw a plan that purposely reduces minority voting strength. Now, we'll tell you at this point right now, we are going to have some discussions, because we have some issues with your two minority districts down around St. Martin real area. This is a trend that has been starting since nineteen ninety. It's been getting more and more diverse, since, or every census count since then, in two thousand and twenty-ten, and twenty twenty even more so. So as we go through this plan, I'm gonna ask the board, uh, with opportunity to meet with the representatives of the, of the school board, community representatives, and also their counterparts on the parish council, because I've already kind of brought this issue up with the redistricting committee that they use. And it's something that we're gonna end up having to work through, just like we did with twenty-ten. But it's probably a remit from that's now for twenty twenty. So those couple of things that we're gonna have to look at. Now, the geography that we use, or, uh, I mentioned, those are the precincts, which you see in the blue right there. And then where we have to split a precinct, we use census blocks. Those are those dark lines that you see. Census block is the smallest geographic unit the census collects a day or four. So precincts are made up of a combination of census blocks. And a combination of precincts creates your election district, so that's how that hierarchy works. So when we have to split a, a, a precinct, then we're generally going to be looking at, uh, doing it by census block. And we do that essentially by just clicking on the block and keeping track of the numbers to see if we, how they're working out. So these types of things, how we would modify these boundaries as we start our discussions. Okay, so we'll take that off. And what you see here are the, I'm gonna take the streets off for, on the blocks off for a moment, take that off, clear it off. What you see in the shaded area is this elective plan right here. This is a starting plan that balances out the populations of the districts. This doesn't mean that this is the plan you have to go with, this is the plan we're gonna start our discussion with. Each of you know your communities better than most folks, so your input, as well as that of the public, is certainly germane toward making modifications to these boundaries to see if something may be more appropriate. I'm here as a resource to help me do that. As we work through this plan, we make mind, okay, I can live with this, my idea is what I want, the numbers fit, I can live with it, it's always gonna be a series of compromises, but hopefully by the time we finish this process, we're gonna come up with a plan that is more suitable for the parish than what we may have right here. We're supposed to come up with a better plan. Definitely we did. What's seeing on the map right here are your, uh, the dark red, uh, lines are your current boundaries. I'll always have that up as we start working through the, uh, through the plan. Where you see the colored areas change off of those lines is where we're having to make a change in your boundaries under the elective plan. Does that mean access there? Maybe not. It might make a change in one area of the district that might allow us to make another change that is more desirable in another part of the district. The labels that you see on there in the little black squares, those are where we're gonna be keeping track of our numbers. The top number is a district number, the middle number is the deviation, and then the bottom number is the, uh, black percentage popul, uh, population percentage. That's where if, uh, with your traditional minority districts, which is, uh, gonna be two, three, and seven, that's where those numbers are gonna be more germane than the rest of them. But, uh, this is where we have at the moment for the starting point. As you can see, for example, District One's had to make some changes. We take off these labels so they don't get too confusing. All right. For example. Set this up. That shaded area was the current District One. You'll see now where the blue comes over, District One's had to come and pick up some additional area over toward St. Martin though. Now, District One still has Lord St. Martin under this configuration. Okay, so why do we have to do that? Well, let's take a look back at our numbers. All right, District One was okay. Problem was District Three needed population, District Four needed, now there is okay, but gonna have some domino effect. District Five needed population. So those adjustments in those areas are going to be affecting some of these boundaries. Like I said, these are some things that we could look at changing, if that is the desire of the, uh, the board. Get that cleared off. And I'm just gonna kind of walk through, then we can come back through, I can take questions. I can take questions while we can look at some changes in the boundaries. Certainly not looking at trying to do everything tonight. This is mostly just to kind of ease you to think. District 2, District 2, even under this configuration, remember, it was low. District 2 has a, I'm sorry, has 1% deviation, has 49% black population. That's what we call our benchmark. That means your current district, 2020 population, you have 49% minority population. That's down from like 56 or 57 back in 2010. That shows you how much the minority population has dropped with the exact same geographic district. It's dropped seven or eight points. We've made some changes on that. Problem was 3 was really low. 3 needed to pick up about 250 people. It had a 52% minority population with the current district, but it was low, a 10% low. Picking up additional population, ideally, you wanna try to pick up minority population. Problem is that beyond those two districts, there's not a lot to work with. That shaded area, those little blocks you see are census blocks that have more black population than white population. So it kind of gives you an idea where you need to go to try to build up your minority. Problem is that 2 and 3 are already pretty much taking up all the ones that have any significant numbers. And as you go out and try to fix the deviation for 3, you're picking up more white population, which is gonna affect minority population. So where we are right now is that District 2 has a deviation of a minus 10.61. That's outside the plus or minus 5%. But using the old Section 5 pre-clearance criteria, they, Department of Justice always felt like it was more important to get your minority percentages up. At some extent, some likelihood it was over the plus or minus 5%. Even with this configuration, District 3 were at minus 9% deviation, at 49.83% minority populated. So one of the things that we're gonna have to come back and visit is, do we wanna keep those two districts fairly equally balanced like we did in 2010? Where they both don't get over 50%, or are we gonna wanna make one out in the mid-50s and the other one in the lower mid-40s? That is a decision recommendation that I'm gonna be looking for from not only representatives, but also the community representatives, as to how you wanna go about doing this. Now, as we do those changes, that's gonna affect District 4. Because District 4 is boarding both 2 and 3, so we may end up with some changes. But under this configuration, District 4 has a 3.67% deviation. I'll put some roads on here so you can get some idea where they are. District 5, as you can see, it had to dig up some additional area. The shaded area here has gone beyond that. Your population growth has been more on the north end of the parish, not the south end of the parish, by and large. So it's having some effect on how these boundaries fit. It's really a function of geography and numbers. And as we work through here, see how these numbers play out, if we make changes, you know, that's what software's for. Let's take a look at District 6, that's the Grogridge area. Some difference, we've, District 8 had to come in and pick up some of this, offset some changes there. District 5's had to come in and pick up some because of their numbers. See what 6 was. 6 had an 11% on the high side, so 6 had to lose population. That's why some of these other districts coming in, they've got some of that. Because you gotta be careful what you pick up, because like 7 is your other traditional minority district. We're gonna get it balanced, but we wanna keep its numbers where it's viable, which it is at 59.6, say. That's a viable majority minority district. As you can see, we have a majority of those census blocks that have low black or white population assigned to the districts under this configuration. All right, let's bring this over to 8. 8's had a little bit of change. It, District 9 picked up a little part of this area, and 8 came and picked up a little bit of the area beyond, south of Cecilia. Picked up that area, now going towards that elementary. And then District 9 had some changes. Take these blocks off for a second, so you can see a little clearer. Had some little minor changes in Cecilia area, a little bit up in the north end between 8 and 9, under this configuration. Both are within plus or minus 5% as is 7. All right. You got a question, Mike?
Yes.
You showing us it right now?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking for District 10 right now, I'm here. And I'm seeing, I'm putting on parish council one, that's what I have to do. Because I'm trying, I've overlaid the two of them, so I'm just, yeah, I'm through here, and I'm seeing that, well, 2 and 6.
Yeah. Let's see, this gives us the number we want.
Another question.
Yes.
Wouldn't it make sense to wait and see what the parish council divides up on theirs before we start making any harsh movements? Because like you said, in the original, you know, if they're gonna divide up precincts that will create new precincts, you know, yes, it may affect us.
Yes. Now, you are, you are correct. You are correct on that. All right, anyone that gives you your plan? I'm gonna take that.
Okay, see, I have to watch this.
I'm doing it for this here. This is your, this is your plan, aren't you? All right. District 5 was the field, District 1 wasn't. All right, let's, let's back my apologies to that folks. I am sorry about that. That was not intended. However, the issue that we're talking about on the minority districts of all is still valid, because they both, both their districts are essentially the same. All right, the brown line, concurrent districts. That's what's a little bad, it's not near as much deviation. All right. 1's had to pick up a little bit of this area out of 3. Part of that is because of the minority voting, trying to balance out and get your minority... They can choose which ones help with the minority numbers without sacrificing whole population. Yeah, this is more what I remember now. No losses up, look at your plan. Under this configuration, District 3 had a minus 3.71% deviation, with a 51.29% black population. And District 2 was in a white state, with a 49%. So your plan actually is following a little bit better than the parish councils. And the reason why is that your population is divided by 10 districts, not 10 districts. So that changes your district average, and that brings it a little bit closer to the deviation. But we still have to have that discussion as to how do we wanna set up the minority districts in the St. Martinville area? One stronger, one more swing district, or both of them equal? All right, let's take a little, let's walk through this again. All right, District 5, District 5 is still taking in lower St. Martin. Picks up some of this area up here, which is coming out of, at District 10. District 1 giving up that to 5. And then 1, I mean 5, also, pretty much, and a little bit right here on 8. 10 and 8. All right, so we got 5, they haven't been really get 6. 6, again, is still the Grogridge area. And put some roads on there. It's a little more compact now because you have a smaller district average than what you saw in the parish council. So it's a little more compact. It's a 5% deviation, so we're good on that. District 7 has a 4% deviation with a 60% minority population. So we're good on that. It pretty much takes in what it did before, except it crosses over right here, across Main Highway, and picks up this area here.
Basically, Mr. Otey is District 5, correct?
Yes.
So he's picked up the wrong block, or was...
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, under this configuration.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so 8. 8 is pretty much following its existing lines, with the exception of a little deviation here, balance out, and then lost this area right here, the 5, compared to just 5. And otherwise, pretty much the same. District 9 at this point right now is just real minor changes right up here, and some of this is the following precinct boundaries, which we can overlay those blue lines. So some of these have been rounded off, mostly just to get to the precinct boundaries. So we don't have to split counting against us, we don't need to have. So that is essentially it. 4, 4, you're still gonna run into the issue once we figure out what direction we're going with Districts 2 and 3. 4 may end up having to have some changes made to it, which could have domino effect to District 1, 6, or possibly even 10. But right now, it's a minus 2% deviation right now under this, under this plan. So everybody is in their respective district, from 10 to 10. 10 came up in that area here, we just discussed, has been over here. 8, pretty much the same. Oh, wait, yes, very little change. 5's 2% deviation on that. A little bit. It works a lot better when you get the right math on screen. But that is what the elective plan on covers. Now, these are the numbers up here. These are deviations. As we go through and make changes, this chart will update itself whenever we want to make some changes. This little chart on slide will tell us what we can with the numbers we're doing. This broke, for the sake of the, those that haven't been through it, remember a minute ago, we were looking at some of those changes in census blocks? If we change entire, let's say this precinct right here, all right? Let's say we take in this area, this block right here came out of it, let's say this was rather, so rather than put that back, so let's say we can put that back in. We've come in here, and we start looking on these, and we see what this starts telling us. It's telling us that 8 can actually take this, because it puts 8 at a 3.21% deviation, and 5 at a minus 3.87. So if you wanna do that, you can do that. And that's what I would ask, you wanna keep it, or you wanna take it out? Let's say you decide you wanna keep it. That was actually wrong. Okay? Yeah, that was part 10?
That was part 10.
Okay.
Because they overused.
Uh huh. It's like, yeah, that was kind of a part of it. So let's say you wanna keep it, and then after that, we're in discussions, and you know, I'm thinking about, ah, I really don't want that, it's just a matter of just, kind of like, a huge stroke, and then you back away to where. So that's how this will work after we go through making the boundary changes. Software does the work for us, we just have to come up with ideas on what we want to model. Any questions so far?
I have a question.
Sure.
To balance this all out, and this is totally random, wouldn't it make sense to start from the north side of the parish, where you have the populated it, and then start working down? Or it wouldn't be that easy?
It doesn't always work quite that easy. Actually, what I, actually started doing, working with the minority districts, is in, in general, because that's an additional constraint. It's not just population, but also the minority representation. And I spent a lot of time working on those two, trying to find the exact combination of blocks that could maximize what we have. That's what you see right here. But we may be able to make some additional changes, explore some additional avenues that may actually help it a little bit. But we also need to make the decision, if this is the best we can do, how do we wanna approach it? Like I said, one strong minority, minority district, and one that's a swing district. Up in District 7, you know, you're, you're in the 60 percentile, so you're in good shape as far as viability in minority districts.
What we interrogate on is the District 7, if you're compiling to almost a whole city that was Grogridge, crossing the bay and gone off Grand Point Road, and gone to Darvett South to, and then to L'Orange. Would you compute maybe two districts in the north, two minority districts in the north?
I wasn't there doing that. I, I actually was kind of thinking before we got the census data that there's been such a shift over the years out of the St. Martinville area up to the north end, and the problem is there's a lot of white population getting there. It throws your deviations up into the 20 and 30% up. And the last thing we did is, one thing to point out is, you don't have to traditionally invite people, it was like initially back in the 60s, it's, you know, everybody does everywhere. It's becoming more integrated. Yes. And we saw that with your student demographics, particularly in St. Martinville area, a lot of that, a lot of things are 50, 40, 60. You know, so you're picking a population, you're not moving the needle much on your, on your ratio percentages. There's no doubt that you've had more population move up on the north end. But again, it's like, I would say it's just more of a, it's been more of an integrated type situation, neighborhoods and whatnot. You don't have those high number clusters anymore like you used to. Still in good shape, but actually, I was kind of thinking you might have been around to maybe around 65% of them, maybe after 10 minutes, 60. Now, part of that may be the response rate. As you know, with COVID, they weren't able to get the census takers out there and lock on the doors, people hadn't jumped out to census blocks. So that may have had an effect, particularly in minority communities. But on the other hand, they allowed people to respond electronically, either on your phone, your tablet, your laptop, using my phone, and a lot of people took advantage of that because that was more convenient for them. So I think you got more response with that, but I think you lost some response because there was a lot of people there to follow up in our own doors. Actually, I have a response rate. We can see what it is, looks like more comparing. The yellow, yellow column is the 2020 response rate, right? You had a 57.8% response rate in 2020. That means 57, 58 households out of every 100 responded to the census. And 2010, you had a 62.8% response rate. So your response rate is lower, which means that about 5% drop. So some of these numbers might be generalized, it could be because of that. We don't know exactly where dropping it in, or who might have it dropped, I can stay from. Historically, it's usually the minority communities are gonna be less apt to respond to the census than others. So I would presume that probably some of the numbers are low. But the trend on the St. Martinville area that has been going lower, when we did it, looking at the 1990 census numbers, they were all up in the mid-up of 60s. And by a few thousand, they were in the low 60s. And then in 2010, they were 57, and now, you know, you're barely breaking 50%. So it's just a trend that's been going off quite some time. Up in Grogridge area, it's been holding pretty steady. Any questions from those in the audience? This is part of the plan, too. This is the, the board's in charge of adopting the plan, but this is the people's plan to elect their representatives. So it's very important for the public to be aware of the discussions and also participate in discussions. As you can see, it's very easy to model something, so don't be shocked. And it goes for everybody. The other plan comes from brainstorming. And don't have to take my word for something, we can model it along here and see what the numbers tell us. Because I've looked at a lot of different configurations. Because I've looked a lot of different configurations, just the one I settled on when we get started. That's all this represents. Now, you may like it. You may want to say, I like it except for modify it. You may say, I hate this thing, just start from scratch. In which case, I have any problem with that. I do this all the time.
Now, District Two.
Yes.
This is a 49%.
Under this configuration, that is correct.
Uh, you see no other area you could probably rather choose to pick up another 1%.
Not without paying attention to three. Between two and three, they have all minority walls. And that's what I was trying to look at on a lot of my different configurations. Take this block in, take that block out, try to get those numbers. That's about the best I've gotten so far. Accent, accent, you know, an interpretation, we want to make one strong, one more strong. Who's District Four, Coach Litter? Would he have some minority votes in there that you could possibly? You have a little bit.
You can shift some from three to two. And you can pick some minority votes from four. And then he can kind of work up a little bit more, you know, that other district.
Yeah, I think that's how that is.
Maybe, there's a suggestion.
Yeah, like that's a majority block, right. But that majority block right there has eight people in it, of which one of them is white and five are black. The others are, they remain under the other district or majorities. So you have, so it's not making a big movement because there's just not a lot of people. So you, you're at, Three's at 51.29, by assignment that would be a 51.31. You can do it if you want to do that. Just a matter of time. Now, remember you're going to have to keep an eye on our borders. So that is one thing that we want to keep an eye on right here. We split precinct boundaries off. That would be a precinct split. Right. So that would count as one of the three that Four could have and Three could have. When we split a precinct, that counts as a split for two districts. Again, you'll just have to wait and see with the parish. No, they split precincts before we do finalizing. Especially in this area, especially with Two, Three, and Four. And maybe to a little degree, the neighbor ones with One. Because I can tell you, there are going to be splits in precincts in that area. It's, it's, it's unavoidable. By law, they have to adopt the plan, that has whole precincts. So that's why we pray hopefully that it's split. You bet. Yes, we are on issue one. We're going to be setting up our secondary district EB. We've got a timeframe to this thing. Uh, right now, a lot of it is all, because of my schedule. We've, there's not many of us that do this work. You know, one of ours were retired, and another one passed away here recently. So we're, so that's work for sure. Kind of overlooked into my area, so this has been kind of hectic. But I'm expecting over the next couple of weeks, we'll just gather again. If y'all would like, I can, I can let y'all know when they are going to have theirs. We can help them sit in as well, you know, just kind of see how things are laying out for them. That's really up to the office. But it's going to be going through the same process for them that we go through. We don't, you know, do it in this group, open to the public. And just get some ideas on that, because what you're going to be doing is fine-tuning it. Fine-tuning the split. Exactly. And that's why I like to go both of them together concurrently. Because we're going to try to take advantage of those. So if I kind of know where I need to go with yours, I kind of have an idea where we've got to go with theirs. I think there's some new precincts that are about to pass up those plans. And not have a lot of splits that we're going to deal with. Because we have a split on school plan that's a lot out. When people go both, certain people in that precinct came up for a candidate as another form of that precinct. A lot of that, so some people get confused about that. I have some new precincts in District Ten. Yeah.
Do you have a question?
I don't have a question.
Yeah. That's our game plan. I kind of want more, because it's a small group.
We can certainly do it.
We're moving on here. What, what should I explain?
If the board has no problem with that, I certainly don't mind you working in a regional area. You know, Two to Three are all in that same area like we were just talking, like Districts Two, Three. They're all working one. At that end, we can work in, you know, Seven to Nine and Eight, and maybe Six, unless they're in that area. I have no problem with that. What is it? I don't know what we're going to do. I didn't.
I've got three on that one.
Yeah, and if someone's out there during this day, that helps. But I know some work and they can't do that, and so we just have to do it each. So we'll try to pull that together. I'll work with the central general office if you have a problem. I think that might be a good next step, other than where we're going to find out what the council thinks. You know, they're kind of mulling this over right now. I have a couple suggestions on some variations that can work. So it's a matter of getting back to the community, you know, up to speed. But we will be setting out what needs, community needs with the representatives. Minority communities in the St. Martinville area here for a center. Sorry, my name, District Seven needs to be represented.
It's a very, our own intention. Before we should get together for the.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't see a lot of problems. The other one's going to be more involved. But we, we work there, we do it when you can and do it again. So I'll kind of set something up, we can set up. Like I said, if y'all are available during the day, it'll make it a lot easier, I can give you a lot quicker.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if it's on the agenda tonight.
Did you know I had discussed with you all the language?
Yes, that's what I thought of it. I told the superintendent, we better be out of work outside of this plant. So that when it comes up on the agenda, you'll know what it is.
You don't have to move it to March to move it.
Yeah, I seen that go to rush when we had to run.
Actually, the past, usually. In the past, I used to not even have a separate resolution because we were normally jumping on the plan and getting it done and had it done within that six month period. So I was kind of working that language into the, into the resolution. But right now, I have to think about that. I don't want to take any chances of somebody saying, oh, I didn't do this. We're going to do it. We don't stick with one this time. All right.